Sorry Chairman, my computer's running very slowly. There it goes. Okay.
I restarted mine because I was afraid that would do, if mine would run slowly.
I was just talking about that, that mine usually does it as soon as I get on and I'm like, oh no.
Okay, but you're all set now?
I turned off the wifi, plugged in a cable and restarted. Okay, I'd like to call the March 2021 meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals to order. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
President, here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here. The first order of business would be a review of the minutes from the February 2021 meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Upstand.
Mr. Dolman?
Upstand.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. If we could please call the first case?
Appeal of Maria and Smat, um, Amr Beckian for a variance from section 220-18B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 49 Dublin Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low density residential zoning district to construct a 16 foot by 33 foot partially pool, partially within the rear yard setback. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 510 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a rear setback minimum of 25 feet. As proposed, the pool would be located 12 feet 6 inches from the rear property line. Therefore, 12 foot 6 inch rear property setback variance is required. Seven notices were sent out, zero responses.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your name and address for the record, your application, what you're asking for and what efforts you made to either mitigate the need of a variance or the size of the variance.
Good evening everyone, I'm Simbad Amr Beckian residing at 49 Dublin and with my wife Maria. Thanks for hearing our case. So, we're asking for the variance as noted to decrease only the rear setback by about half. Uh, we, from our initial plans, we decreased the size of the pool we originally wanted by about 30%. Uh, any smaller would really not suit the needs of our family. We do have four kids. Um, there's no option to purchase land given the location of the property and all other locations in the backyard were explored and none really permitted any sufficient sun exposure or safe access from the patio. Uh, placing the pool within the rear setback requirement would, as it is currently, would encroach on the current patio and we feel it's too close to the HVAC system as well as the home foundation. Um, so that's pretty much the, the issues we have. Part of the issue has also been the location of where our house is located on the property. It's set way far back towards the backyard, leaving a very small backyard in relation to the front yard and we discovered that obviously as we were trying to look into where we could place the pool.
Thank you. Are there questions for members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Uh, just wondering the size of your pool, is it 16 by 33 or is it 15 by 34?
I, I believe it's 15 by 34.
Okay.
I remember, obviously we went, I'm sorry, obviously we went back and forth a little bit, but I believe what stuck in my head was 15 by 34.
Okay, 15 by 34, okay. Hey Laura, because I'm looking at the first paragraph that Linda read. I did see somewhere it was 16 by 33.
It does say that the, um, in the scheduling or the agenda, it says 16 by 33.
Okay, so I, I, because I did notice, I saw that somewhere. So it is, uh, we're confirming it's 15 by 34, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead Linda.
The application says 15 by 34, the denial says 16 by 33. So, there is conflicting information and the application is 15 by 34, so that would be the best, the number that we should follow.
Okay, just want to make sure because, uh, the reason I want to make sure because that will play at least a foot compared to 12.5. So, uh, so we're still looking to get half of the setback, right?
I think it would be.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And, uh, this is, uh, who, who's behind your property in the back? Do you have anybody in the back of your property?
There is nobody, it's, um.
The Lyshak Hill Preserve.
And I think behind it is the neighborhood, um, I guess banned around the property.
We were told there's like, uh, before the Lyshak Hill, there's some, uh, other town property maybe, I don't know. Or is it directly the Lyshak Hill? I actually don't know.
Okay, so there's no neighbors in the back, that's basically.
Uh, there's some sort of, it's, I'm looking at the, uh, the plan submitted by the engineer, it says nature NF Nature Conservatory, Conservancy.
Yes.
And do you, do you have neighbors to, you have neighbors to your left and neighbors to your right?
Yes.
And, uh, have you talked to your neighbors about, uh, putting a pool and so on?
We discussed it with the neighbors to the left, um, they're renting the property. Um, and the owners, I don't know what their initial plans are, um, for the future.
Okay.
They haven't been here since we moved in, I think about a year into the time that we were there. They had moved out and have been renting since, so.
Okay, uh, and do you have a fence in the back?
We currently do not, but we will be putting in a fence after hopefully our pool is approved and built. The fence will be going in it.
Okay, okay, and just so you know, I know, uh, some of the information is already on application, but for us, we would like to put it on, on record, so you might see us asking these questions again, so it goes on record, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Amr Beck, uh, and I'm going to butcher your last name, Amr Beckian?
That was pretty good.
Yeah, that was really good. Better than my first time.
Mr., if you can just, I know, um, you touched on it briefly, I'm looking at the, um, in your packet, there's the graphic scale, the surveyor's notes and whatnot, the, the schematic where your pool's going to be located, okay?
Yes.
And I know you touched on it, but just so it's nice and clear in the record, this is as we're, as we're facing your house, the pool's going to go in the rear left corner of your property, correct?
Correct.
Yes, rear left, but it will be within the side setback requirement.
Right. Um, I'm just, I, I see and, and I, I saw some, some photos of, of the rear of your house and I see what you're saying about your porch, whatnot. Um, can you just walk us through, uh, whether there were any other viable options in the, keeping the pool in the, in the rear yard? If there were any other viable options and if not, why not?
Yeah, so what, if we did go, uh, from the rear setback, um, as it is currently 25 feet, that would encroach by about three to four feet on the current patio and would be within about five feet of the HVAC units that are there. Um, you know, honestly, then we would have to probably redo a lot of the patio and for our family size, I, we could not have it that close. I feel it's a little safer if it's a little further away from the house too. And the other area we, we explored was toward the northern end of the backyard, which is, if you're looking at our house, it would be towards the right and there we really don't get as much sun at all and so.
I don't, I don't see the pool at all from there, that's a, that's a bedroom area and so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to see the pool because of kids at all. Um, this way it's a kitchen and a sun eating kitchen area and then the living room and that would all be visible from, you know, the main living area to the backyard and the pool.
What, what are the ages of your kids that would be using the pool?
Uh, they are currently, uh, from eight to 14, uh, sorry, eight to 15, I got to keep it straight.
Okay.
We have four children, yes.
And I know you said you were going to put a fence in, is the plan to fence in the entire backyard or just the pool area?
It would mainly be the, uh, pool area, just the pool area, so.
Okay.
Encompass just the patio that's going to be built around the pool.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, um, are you guys on municipal sewer there?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a quick question, if I may, Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Uh, I just want to clarify again for the record that you are looking for a rear yard setback variance, not side. Uh, I think it was perhaps mistaken, uh, earlier, but it's only for the rear, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Anyone in the public who wants to be heard for or against the application? Ask the applicants if there's anything you wish to add.
No, uh, thank you.
I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that, um, to approve, uh, the application as written for the following reasons, I find that this is not a undesirable change in the neighborhood. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be reasonably, reasonably be achieved by another method. The requested area variance is absolutely substantial, we're talking about a, uh, a 50% change in the setback required. Uh, the proposed variance, uh, does not have, uh, any, uh, obvious fiscal or environmental adverse effect on the neighborhood conditions. Um, and, uh, while the, um, alleged difficulty is self-created, I do find on the whole, uh, on the balance that we should grant this application.
Motion's been made, is there a second or a second?
I'll second for the reasons stated.
We have a motion made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the court could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Uh, yes, I, uh, feel that the applicant has given due consideration to uh, the issues that, that's presented there, uh, have placed it in such a position, the pool, that there is only the need for a rear yard setback, given the, uh, topography of the land and the, um, the, the lack of any neighbors in the rear yard, which would probably be the ones most affected by this. Uh, I, it, it's not going to cause a, a problem in terms of a change in the neighborhood. Um, I also note that, uh, while they do have some other, excuse me, areas of the backyard, it's not feasible for them to put those there because of the presence of, uh, of a patio in the back and, and other structures or items in the rear of the house. I do note, uh, and they brought this up, that the house does sit quite a ways back off the, uh, the front property line, uh, placing it at least in the middle or the back, uh, two thirds of the way back on the property, which does, uh, create unique situation in terms of the placement of the pool. So for those reasons as well, I would vote yes on the motion.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes for all the reasons stated.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green? Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
I will also vote yes for the reasons stated, the variance is granted, good luck, thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
You as well. If we call the second case, please?
The appeal of Joan Thompson and Michael Goldstof for a variance from section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1358 Hawthorne Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low density residential zoning district to construct an in-ground pool which exceeds the number of allowable accessory structures on the property. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. There are currently three accessory structures on the property, one shed, one hot tub and one fence. As proposed, the pool represents a fourth accessory structure, therefore a variance for one additional accessory structure is required. 10 notices were sent, one response.
Could you read the response, please?
Laura was going to read that.
Okay.
And she's muted?
Now Linda, for some reason I don't have the Dublin, do you have the Dublin?
No, we're not on Dublin, we're on Hawthorne.
We're on Hawthorne, I had that one, sorry about that. Um, I, I support the appeal by Joan Thompson and Michael Goldstof to obtain a variance from section 220-18B2 of the Niskuna zoning ordinance. I support their request to be able to construct an in-ground pool. Michael Ibauski, 1350 Hawthorne Road, Niskuna, New York, 1230.
I would ask if the applicant that I can see you could please just come forward and state your name, address, set forth what your application is and what efforts you made to mitigate either the need of a variance or the size of a variance.
Sure, Michael Goldstof, Joan Thompson, 1358 Hawthorne Road. Um, we are requesting the variance to get a fourth accessory structure, which is a 14 by 30 foot in-ground pool, um, in our backyard. Um, we already have three accessory structures, including the fence which encircles the perimeter to backyard. Um, we have a shed and we have a hot tub. Um, so this is a fourth structure. Um, we thought that the shed is necessary really for keeping our stuff. Um, and stuff for maintenance of the pool for the backyard. The fence is necessary because of the pool. Um, the hot tub is the discretionary thing that we wanted to, to join with the pool. Um, the neighbors, um, we talked to both the neighbors, which you have, they, Dr. Jacobowski is two houses up actually. The neighbor to the right of us, um, he, they, uh, I'm going to read from my letter to you. Uh, they, they are the ones with the least vegetation blocking the view, they wish us the best of luck. The neighbor with the much smaller possible view with the other side, they live on Rose Hill, congratulated us on the project. We actually didn't hear back from the neighbor who lives directly behind us, we, they're in and out and, um, we actually haven't seen her in quite a bit, a long time. Uh, but we did leave a note for her, uh, we attempted to contact her. Um, so it's a modest sized pool set in the middle of our backyard. It doesn't go up against the setbacks. Um, it's, it's really our desire to have both the hot tub and the pool, that's, that's what it comes down to. Um, but, I'm sorry.
You, and you would be using the hot tub in conjunction with having a pool as part of the aquatic experience?
That's correct. More likely we would use, I, I'm not, we would use the hot tub in the summer as well, but most likely we use the hot tub in the cooler months and the pool in the warmer months, but yeah, we would use them both at the same time. Um, yeah, that's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I've greatly enjoyed the use of the term aquatic experience as a part of today's proceedings. This is enjoyable for me, thank you for bringing that light to my day.
It was the best I came up with in the moment. Any questions for any members of the board? Any comments from the public?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't get off mute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, no, it's not your fault. Um, I, I'm just looking, this is Keith Frary, I'm just looking at the, at the diagram, the layout of the backyard that you have. And if I understand this correctly, the, there is, the hot tub is a seven by seven, correct?
That is correct.
And it actually exists on, as you stand at the the front of your house looking towards the back, it's on the left side, uh, very near what looks like an existing deck, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, is the, am I reading this correctly, is the patio that's, that's indicated there, which appears to be around the proposed pool, is that already in or is that going in?
That's part of the whole pool project.
Whole project, so the pool would go in, you would have a patio around the pool and essentially the, the, the deck patio would all be one.
Correct.
One complex there, so to speak. The shed that you have there is, it, it looks like it's, it's almost in the side yard on the left side as, as it, as it's facing the, uh.
It, yes, it's, it's, it's close to the house on the left side of the picture, but behind, uh, the residence is not totally marked here, there's another uh, 10, I'm going to estimate another 10 feet of house going front where there is a fence that attaches to the front left corner of the house.
Is the, the, the fence that you have, is it attached to the house or does it, is it around the perimeter?
It atta, oh, it, it, yes, no, it's the perimeter of the backyard, but attaches to the front house on the left side of that picture and the back of the house on the right side of the picture.
Okay, is the shed inside the fence or outside the fence?
Inside.
Okay, and you say it's close to the residence, how, I mean, it, it appears to be very close, how close is it?
It's like, it's a foot, a 14 inches.
Okay, and, and the shed actually appears to be, it's obviously not in the backyard where the pool would be, uh, the patio and the hot tub is a little further back towards the back of the, uh, off the back of the residence, so these accessory structures are not all grouped in the same area.
Correct.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd like to ask a question, if I may?
Yes.
This is Katrina Pacheco. Uh, the, it seems that there are quite a few shrubs at the front of the property and there's a bit of, uh, slope on the property, can you talk about slope a bit? Uh, and how it influenced where you were placing the pool on the property?
Well, the pool has to really go in the, the slope did not affect the, the choice of the pool because in order to meet the setbacks, the pool almost, almost has to go right in the center of the backyard. Um, but we did have the, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know who contacted me from the town. Um, and, uh, that, I believe the title was junior engineer. Um, and we referred that to our landscaper, um, Matt at GSL and the level of the retaining wall that's necessary is below the two feet and he thinks it's probably less than 18 inches that would be necessary to meet that slope.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more question, um, how, how long have you guys lived in that house?
Twenty, um,
Six years.
Twenty-six years, 1994.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
What, uh, you have three structures, did you put those three structures in or they were in there before you moved in?
No, um, the, the, they were all pretty, the shed was not, but the other two were, were there, uh, we put in, but the shed we put in. We put them all in, but I, I just can't give you the timeframe on the shed. I know the other two were very early in the.
Well, that's okay, I'm just curious if you inherited those three structures or they were there. Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the public wish to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, I would ask if there's anyone who wishes to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to approve the uh, variance as requested. I find this is not an undesirable change to the neighborhood, I find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by another method. The requested area variance is substantial, uh, despite it being a, a modest pool, uh, as stated on the application. Uh, the proposed variance does not have, uh, an adverse effect, uh, that I, that I can see on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Uh, and while the alleged difficulty is self-created, um, this is not necessarily determinative and on the whole, uh, I would like to move that we approve the variance as requested.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
I'm going to vote, vote yes on the motion and I would add that, um, the, the applicant, uh, first of all, has uh, been diligent enough to place the, the pool in the backyard area so it doesn't intrude on rear or side yard setbacks, those are not before us and as they've said very clearly, they, uh, selected the placement of the pool so there wouldn't be issues with rear side yard setbacks. Solely before us is the number of accessory structures. Um, if you look at the accessory structures, they are required, would be required to have a fence for protection, uh, in and out of the pool. Um, the fence exists in the back already. Um, you've also got a, um, shed, but if you look at the placement of the shed, uh, the shed is placed almost contiguous to the house. It's within a fence and it's also up more to the side yard. Um, and then the only other accessory structure is a hot tub, which is, is also, at least as far as I can tell, is, is, uh, fairly close to the ground or at least is, is not sitting up very high, so as we look at the type of accessory structures that they have, uh, one they'd be required to have, which is a fence, the pool's in-ground, the hot tub is not very high, so I don't feel that, uh, by, by adding the pool, they necessarily, uh, cause a change. Uh, even though it is, uh, one more accessory structure, I don't think the effect of it is really going to be an issue. I, I don't see again that they can, they can place it in the other areas of the backyard because they have a problem, would have a problem with needing additional variances for side yard, rear yard setbacks. So for those reasons as well, I'm gonna vote yes to approve the motion.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna also vote yes and I'd like to add that we had this uh kind of application before us before. And when it comes to the hot tub, we always kind of considered to allow for the pool next to it. So for all these reasons, I'm gonna say yes.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons already stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons that have been stated, I will also vote yes.
If I may?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I was voting yes for the reasons stated and also based upon the information provided. It seems to me that the pool is harmonious with, with the rest of the property, notwithstanding the fact that there's an additional structure. I don't think the pro, the statute concerning the additional structures was meant to prohibit in this instance, the addition of a pool. For those reasons, for that reason and for the reasons stated, I'm voting yes.
Thank you. And for the reasons which have been stated, I will also vote yes. The variance is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, good luck.
Thank you, thanks.
If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of Kevin Jordan for variance in section two twenty dash eighteen V three B and section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at ten Flower Hill, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a sixteen foot by forty foot pool partially within the side yard setback. Section two twenty dash eighteen V three B states that the required side and rear dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of one hundred and twenty square feet. The pool at six hundred and forty square feet is a major accessory structure. Section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IB establishes the side setback minimum of twenty feet. As proposed, the pool will be located five feet from the side property line. Therefore, fifteen foot side yard setback variance is required. Nine notices were sent out, zero responses.
If the applicant could please come forward, state your name and address, summarize your application, the variances you're requesting and what efforts were made to either mitigate the need for a variance or the size of a variance.
Hello, this is Kevin Jordan. I apply for the variance, I'm also here with my wife, Lisa Jordan. Hopefully you guys can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, thank you. So, uh, yes, we, we're looking to put an in-ground pool into our backyard. And one of the first things that we did to discuss the location of the pool, because our backyard has had some, some history. After we initially built the house in two thousand and eleven, there were some erosion issues in the backyard. We had, our builder hired a geotechnical engineer to evaluate the condition and the slopes of our yard. And as a end, that result, they had to install five drainage pipes into the backyard to help stabilize the slope, which was completed in two thousand and sixteen and our yard has been great ever since then. We knew we always wanted a pool, so the first thing what we did was we hired the geotechnical engineer ourselves. And I asked for advice from him about putting a pool in his safe, given his history and the conditions with the yard. He said, of course. And we also are working with a civil engineer, make sure that everything goes in correctly and according to plan. We met with both the geotechnical engineer, the civil engineer and the landscaper that we'll eventually be working with. All three of them, we met in the backyard. We went over all the different boring samples that were done back in two thousand and fifteen, which basically said all the condition of our soil. And based on all of their advice, they recommended to put it as close to the side yard as possible in the location that is depicted on the drawings. That is where the virgin soil is. Anywhere else in our backyard has a lot of backfill that was put in by the builder when they constructed it. It's unstable soil and we really don't have a lot of other room in our backyard because we have to maintain the one hundred foot buffer from the federal wetlands. So we do not want to invade anywhere on the property where the wetlands are or we do not want to put a pool inside that buffer zone. So we're looking to stay outside the buffer zone. And the location that we put forward was the one that was recommended to us based on being able to put it in virgin soil. And also it'll help on the cost, of course, of a retaining wall when we eventually put that in. We did consult with the neighbor immediately next door to us that would be most impacted. He had no issues with the proposal. We also consulted with our neighbor across the street from us that may be able to see a side view of what's going on. He also had no issues whatsoever, he wished us luck. We'll make sure that where the pool will be, you're not gonna be able to see it from the road condition. We'll also make sure that we have it as well landscaped. And so, so our neighbor next door is not impacted by it. That's, that's our proposal moving forward.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the members of the board?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. What's the size again of the pool, ten by forty or sixteen by forty?
Sixteen by forty, yes. And we chose a fiberglass structure, which was also recommended just based on water conditions that just are present when, you know, in the land inside. So provide the, the best durability for longer.
So sixteen by forty is your request for fifteen feet set side? Are they on the sixteen or are they on the forty?
Uh, it's, it's on the sixteen.
It's on the sixteen, so the forty does not affect your side setback?
I'm sorry, well, the pool is gonna be coming in at an angle based on the slope. So it's, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the, it wouldn't impact it no matter what, because no matter, no matter what size pool I get, I'm gonna have to apply for a variance. If I push it further into my yard, the amount of backfill that I'm gonna have to pay for is gonna make the cost substantially higher.
So if you were to get a, if you were to get fourteen by thirty, would that help you eliminate some of the setback or not?
No.
No?
No, I have to apply for a variance no matter what.
Right, but the variance would be much smaller, correct?
I do not, I do not know. I'd have to look at the exact drawing and the location and how it's going to protrude out. I mean, the other, the other reason why we're looking for a larger pool is based on the size of the family. And also some of the surrounding, you know, we're putting some landscaping rocks in as well to help with the slope of the hill. And also just for the aesthetics of it, to ensure that, you know, it's what we want. I mean, the amount of retaining walls and everything that we gotta put in is making this a very expensive project to begin with. And I'm, I'm not looking to put a, a small pool in because the pool is, is not even, with the majority of the cost is lying. It's, I'm, I'm making sure that I'm doing this right with, uh, with all the, you know, the patios and the retaining walls.
Okay, yeah, we, we, you know, as on the board, we were supposed to ask you if you looked at other options to reduce your, you know, your request, that's all. I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Jordan, this is Keith Frary. I'm looking, it, it appears both from your application and the positioning of the pool, you're gonna be very close to the, to the side property line, correct? Five?
Yes.
And I take it, since you don't have a pool, there probably, is there a fence there or no fence there right now?
No, no fence yet, but we'll definitely have to get one. We do have a fence on the different side of our property, on the other side of the house. That was because the builder actually had to install a very high retaining wall to help with erosion on the other corner of the house. And when they did that, based on the height of the retaining wall and the drop, they had to put a fence in.
Okay.
We do have a fence and we're gonna have to amend that and get a fence that's gonna go around the pool.
The, the fence that will have to be installed because of the pool, is it just gonna be around the pool or are you gonna place it around the yard itself?
It'll be around the pool. It'll be around the pool and the, like, the patios that'll be going in. So it's not gonna be around the whole yard.
So the intention is, is to put in to some extent a patio in the back of the house as well?
Absolutely, yes.
It appears, at least from the photos that I've reviewed, that there's a heavily wooded area behind your house?
That's, yeah, those are, we, our house butts up against WTRY, that land. So we have about, we have a two acre property. The amount of woods is very far off into the backyard. We're talking over two hundred feet and we won't go anywhere near that.
Oh, no, but my question really is, in terms of the impact that the placement of the pool that close to the property line, it would only really be an impact involving the, the neighbor? As you, as you face the front of your house, the neighbor to the right, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Has that neighbor, have you had conversations with that neighbor about what you intend to do?
I did, yes, we spoke in person about a week ago. I explained everything to him and I, I wanted to make sure he was okay with the intention of what we're doing. If he had any issues, he said he had no problem.
It also appears as I look at, at, at your house, the placement of your house and the placement of his house, his house does, there's a, there appears to be a fairly wide expanse of yard in between the, the side of his house and what appears to be your driveway or your house, right?
Yeah, I would, the, in the picture, yeah, the, the corner of our house is about, is already about halfway into his backyard. Just as the nature of the, as the nature of the neighborhood is.
Right, but there appears to be somewhat of a buffer in between the edge of his house and, and, and where the property line would be.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And again, that would be the only neighbor that really would be impacted by the placement of the pool where you have it right now.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against the application? I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance as written. I find that this is not an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The benefits sought by the applicant is, at least as stated by the applicant, is not achievable by any other method. The requested area variance is absolutely substantial. The proposed variance, and not only doesn't seem to have an adverse effect, but it would appear that the applicant is attempting to avoid a negative environmental impact surrounding the bordering wetlands. Additionally, the alleged self, the alleged difficulty is absolutely self-created. But I do find on the balance that we should grant this application for variance.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second the motion for the reasons stated.
Motion is made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
I'm gonna vote yes on the motion. I would note that along with the application submitted by Mr. Jordan, there is, as a part of the record, a, a letter submitted by ABD Engineers LLP of Schenectady, which addresses some of the issues that we as a board are supposed to address. One of which being is whether this placement of the pool can be done either in any other possible location or if we can lessen the need for a variance. And I would note that within that letter, the engineer, one of the engineers in this firm has indicated that because of the soil condition, the pool had to be kept up uphill on the lot if possible. And that actually that recommendation in terms of placement was made by both a geotechnical engineer and a civil engineer. They also indicate that there was consideration given to different sized pools and a smaller pool originally was selected. There's no other land, at least that the engineers felt could be utilized for placement of the pool. Looking at photos of the property itself, I note that there is a very large expanse of wooded area behind the applicant's house. And really, there is only one of the neighbors that has been affected or would be affected by the placement of the pool. That neighbor has indicated, has filed no objection to the, the application for a variance and has indicated to the applicant that he did not object to what they're attempting to do. Obviously, the, the pool is close to the side yard setback and intrudes on it fairly substantially. But again, the pool can't be moved, even if it was a smaller pool, it still can't be moved away from the side yard setback due to the issues identified by the engineering firm, which the applicant consulted with. For those reasons, I would vote yes on the motion.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes for the reasons stated.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I will also vote yes. Your variance is granted, good luck with your project. Thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of Frank Barbera for a variance in section two twenty dash four and section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at two oh one Park Ridge Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a single-family home partially within the front yard setback. Section two twenty dash four states for corner lots, each street line shall be considered a front lot line. The property fronts on two streets, Banker Avenue and Park Ridge Drive. Section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC requires a thirty foot minimum front yard setback. As proposed, the house will be located twenty-six point five feet from the front property line on Banker Avenue. Therefore, three point five foot front yard setback variance is required. Eight notices were sent out, six responses.
The first responses from Julie and Stacy McGowan of two seventeen Park Ridge Drive. And they state, a representative from Barbera Homes reviewed the variance with us and we support the applicant's request, thank you. Next letter is from Gina Alteri at two Next letter is from Gina Alteri at 221 Park Ridge Drive, and they write, "A representative from Barbera Homes reviewed the variance with me, and I support the applicant's request." Third letter is from Nicole Crabtree, and she writes, "My name is Nicole Crabtree. I own a home at 200 Park Ridge Road, Niskuna, New York, 22309. A representative from Barbera Homes reviewed the variance with me and I support the applicant's request. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you." Third, of course, my fourth email is from Linda and Ariman Capriellian of 208 Park Ridge Drive, and they state, "A representative from Barbera Homes reviewed the variance with me and I support the applicant's request." Mark Jeffrey and Elizabeth Bruker of 265 Park Ridge Drive wrote, "We have reviewed the variance requested with a representative of Barbera Homes associated with 201 Park Ridge Drive, and we support their request." The last one I received electronically, and it is from Loretta Maynard, and she writes, "This is Loretta Maynard, and I have been a resident of Niskuna for 21 years, and my address is 2589 Banker Ave., Niskuna, New York, 12309. I am sending this email because I wanted to express to you that I have no opposition for Barbera Homes to build a new home with only a 25-foot frontage variance. Thank you for your time."
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your name and address, your application, what efforts were made to minimize the need of a variance or the size of the variance?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Barbera Homes. I am the builder of the Park Ridge community. It's a 25 lot subdivision right on Banker Ave., near the town pool and rec center. When we took this project over in 2015, we worked closely with the town. The project had stalled at that point, and we were able to come in, get all the infrastructure in, and put this community together. As we're starting to wind down in the neighborhood, we only have a couple lots left available. Everything is sold out, fortunately, and that's why this evening I am here on behalf of Officer Henry and his wife, who are looking to build on 201, one of the last of the couple remaining lots in the neighborhood. The other remaining one is even smaller. Over the years, we've had plenty of interest in this lot, but because of the fact that it's a corner lot with the limited front yard setback, you know, we've had difficulty marketing it and finding a home that fits on it. Corner lots are typically not a problem. They're desirable in all the neighborhoods we build in. To mitigate things, we have offered several plans that were smaller that would fit on the property. In addition, when, when, just in this plan, I worked with my architect to see if we could reduce it anymore. The plan that I am proposing could not fit, we could not make it any smaller, to make it any more reasonable, usable. So that's one of the reasons, the main reason we're coming forward with the request for a variance. It is one of our standard plans in the neighborhood. There's no custom modifications or additions that created this, so, but we're just having trouble fitting something on this particular lot.
Before we go further, I have a question for counsel. We have a contract vendor who is a town employee as opposed to the applicant being a town employee. Is there any ethics disclosures that need to be done?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for the applicant. Did you, were you involved in setting up the whole subdivision when it was done?
I was not. This was originally brought through the approval process by a different developer, who for personal reasons wasn't able to finish the project. So we bought it approved, and the infrastructure had started. It had lay dormant, and we took over the project, and were able to get the infrastructure done and get the project completed.
So it wasn't a situation, I looked at the tax maps and the lots towards the south end of the property are quite deep, and I was looking and thinking, gee, if you would move that road three feet further, you wouldn't have any issues?
Yeah, no, I had nothing to do with that.
Right. Are there custom changes you could make to this house that would make it fit?
No, unfortunately, because I sat with our architect trying to figure out how to reduce it, and the way the first floor, the way the second floor stacks over it, even if I tried to take room out of the family room, then the bathroom became too small to be usable. There wasn't enough room on the garage side to get it down enough where you could still fit two cars into it. So no, architecturally, I was unsuccessful.
Did you consider turning the house 90 degrees so it faces banker and then wouldn't need any variances?
No, we did not take that into consideration. The feeling that in this particular neighborhood, the house is facing in would probably, you know, that was desirable, and the fact that there was no neighbor on banker, whereas if we turned it, we would be, the back of this house would be right on the side yard, and they wouldn't really have a usable backyard.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing no questions from the board. I would ask if there's anyone in the public who wishes to be heard for or against the application? I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we grant the variance as requested. I don't find that this is an undesirable change in the neighborhood. In fact, I find that leaving an undeveloped lot here is an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I find that the benefits sought by the applicant probably can't be achieved by another method. The, it would certainly seem that the sale of the property cannot be achieved by any other method. The requested area variance is not substantial. This is a relatively small setback that our variance that we're asking for here. It doesn't seem to be any environmental or physical conditions of the neighborhood that are going to be affected here. And also, while the alleged self-difficiency was absolutely self-created, as acknowledged by the applicant, that is not determinative, and on the balance, I find that we should grant the application for variance as requested.
A motion has been made. Is there a second for the motion?
Mr. Chairman, Richard Green speaking. I would second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
I'm going to vote yes on the motion, as usually is the case with, excuse me, with lots that have essentially two front yards. This is a unique situation. The applicant has met the setback on one side, and we have a very minor request for a variance and a setback on the other side. I would note that all the other properties obviously face the, the same direction. So to turn this one, as has been indicated by the applicant, to turn this property 90 degrees facing banker would leave the family with essentially an almost nonusable backyard. So I don't view that, that this is necessarily can be done in any other fashion to achieve the purpose. Would leave the house consistent with the other properties on the street, which would keep the character of the neighborhood consistent. For those reasons, I vote yes on the motion.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to also vote yes. I want to put a comment in there that the builder has looked at many different options, and it looks like this is the way it'd be feasible for him to, to build this property. So yes.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I will vote yes. I'll also add that in discussing what might be alternatives, this builder inherited the design of the development, was not involved in making a potentially shorter lot, and gave a reasonable, clear, and coherent response as to why, although the house could be built without a variance, why it would be undesirable to do so for the use of the property and for the neighborhood. And for those reasons, I will vote yes. Sir, the variance is granted. Good luck with your project.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
You as well. If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of Julie Burkholder for a variance from Section 220-16E2 and Section 220-53B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 1410 Valencia Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium density residential zoning district, to construct a front porch addition, partially within the front and side yard setbacks. Section 220-16E2 states that if 70% or more of the lots on the same side of the street within 500 feet of this lot have buildings prior to July 1st, 1971, then the front yard setback is the average setback of those lots. As applied, the average front yard setback along Valencia Road is 34 feet. As proposed, the front addition extends to approximately 26 feet from the front property line. Therefore, an eight-foot front yard setback variance is required. Section 220-53B allows an addition to a non-conforming structure that brings it no nearer to the sideline than the existing structure, or one half the required distance for the zoning district, whichever is greater. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. Since the existing house is only 6 feet 8 inches from the sideline, 7 feet 6 inches becomes the minimum required side yard setback. As proposed, the front addition will be 7 feet from the sideline. Therefore, 6-inch side yard setback variance is required. 14 notices were sent, 2 responses.
A letter from John RM and Mary Kay Mirto. Dear members, we wish to express our opinion regarding the proposed appeal to change the zoning as it applies to the property at 1410 Valencia Road, Niskuna, New York. The details of the proposed variance are described in your letter of March 5th, 2021. We object to the proposed variance. The next letter is from Christopher Rust, and he said, "Dear Mr. Goodman and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I write to urge the Zoning Board of Appeals to approve the variances sought by Julie Burkholder for yard and side yard setbacks. I reviewed the letter dated honor about March 5th, 2021, giving notice of the hearing regarding the variances, which Ms. Burkholder and her family are seeking approval. I believe the variances sought, as described in the letter, are de minimis, and respectfully request the board to prove the same. The Burkholders are my neighbors across the street. I can certainly understand that the side yard variance sought for the front and backyards would put the Burkholder's proposed structures closer to their neighbor's property line. Mr. and Mrs. Burkholder are wonderful and considerate neighbors. I am confident that they have discussed the proposed structure with their neighbors, Dan and Elizabeth Gleason, at 1406 Valencia Road, and the Gleasons have approved the same encroaching toward their property line. Very truly yours, Christopher Rust." And he's at 1417 Valencia Road. I did want to note, the applicant provided her own letter with seven signatures of support, and that I very kind of last minute, maybe two hours ago, did want to note, because I had been talking with the legal department, that it's relevant that this was before the board on July, June, June 19th, 2019, and I thank you the minutes for that case. If you have any questions on it, I have it available on my computer.
And just for legal clarification, since this was approved, it was then lost by failure to apply for a building permit. Is this the exact same application that we have, variance that we're now being asked to do what was approved in June of 2019?
It's my understanding in speaking with Laura that they've, they've actually reduced the request for the variance. Is that correct, Laura?
It's correct in that they're no longer putting, they had withdrawn the carport in 2019, and they're no longer putting the addition. So it's correct in that the overall variance request is reduced from 2019.
And I would ask for counsel to summarize what the race trudakata effects would be of our previously approving this, even though it was vacated by virtue of not starting to build?
I mean, given that it was previously approved as a greater variance, is that correct, Laura? Was it approved with the carport previously?
It was approved with the addition.
It was after the carport.
Without the carport. Given that, given that what's, at least what's before the board tonight was previously approved, and the only reason that it's before the board again, it was because the applicant didn't get a building permit within the period of time. Basically, the board would have to follow along the guidelines of which they made their prior recommendations, unless there's different members of the board that put forward a motion for some other reason that wasn't stated previously in the minutes. Hence why I had Laura send those minutes out for review.
Thank you, counsel. I would ask if the applicant could please come forward and state your name and address, your application, the reason for it, and what efforts were made to mitigate the need of a variance or the size of the variance?
I'm Julie Burkholder at 1410 Valencia Road. I'm sorry, I don't have an aquatic experience that I'm trying to get like everyone else. I'm a little disappointed, but I just want a front porch on my house. Yeah, so as was discussed a moment ago, we applied for a variance in 2019, and after it was granted, I went to try to get quotes from a couple contractors, which, it was in the summer, and they were all very busy, so it took way, like several months to even try to get someone to come and give me a quote, and then it was way over the budget that I wanted to spend. So we kind of said, okay, we're just going to let this go for a while through the winter and the non-building season. And then we've got it back in our minds again last fall. So this is why we're doing this again. We're hoping to get it built this year for sure. The, I'm only asking for something that, it's not coming out towards the road any further than another house. It's, I think, four houses down, my, one of our neighbors. So I don't think that it affects the, the neighborhood in a bad way. And this is actually, my old one that was granted was going to be partially enclosed, and this will just be an open front porch, so it will actually impact sightlines or neighbors' views or anything less. Yeah, so I'm just trying to get a more reasonable and affordable plan based on what I had approved before.
And there was one person who objected. Where does that person live in relationship to you?
I have no idea who that person is, so it's no one on my block, I don't think.
Mr. Roberts is checking that now.
It's 1403 Clifton Park.
That's, yeah, behind us and on a corner. So, I mean, they can't even see, that's around the block. So they couldn't even see our property unless they tried to. I don't know who they are, though.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Ms. Burkholder, this is Keith Frary. I, I was, according to our minutes, was the one who made the motion to approve your prior request for variances once we did away with the garage issue. Tell me if you would again, and I could, I could probably read what I said in here, but I'm interested to hear from you. The prior- The prior request that was approved and the current request differ how again?
So the prior request was going to be a real proper addition, which was going to be partially enclosed and partially open porch. So, you know, half the width of the house, and it was going to be a very small front porch area, then walking into an enclosed mudroom sort of area. So now, we're not going to do that mudroom. We just want a front porch that spans the house. To add curb appeal, our house is very, it's just flat on the front and very plain. And I think it will actually add a lot of curb appeal and character without changing the look of the neighborhood at all. I think that Laura has a drawing that I submitted.
Yeah, you did, and it's in there, and I see it. I just, I, for the life of me, I couldn't remember. I know that there was a piece of it enclosed, but I didn't know how it came out, the prior request. Is the size the same? In other words, the size of the current request, is it the same size as the prior request?
The depth from the house towards the street is the same. But I've, this time, it was only going to be the right half of the house when I was enclosing it. And now I want to make it the full width of the house, but it's all.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the footprint of what was there before. I know part of it was enclosed. The footprint is essentially the same as the footprint of the entire open porch? It's not going to, it's, you're not requesting more of a variance this time?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, Ms. Burkholder, this is Katrina Pacheco. I just want to clarify one of the plans that Ms. Robertson just had up on the screen seemed to indicate that the building was on the corner of Almeria, and I don't believe it is. Could you confirm that it is not on the corner of Almeria?
No, it's not on the corner. It's one house away from the corner.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Anyone in the public who wishes to be heard for or against this application? I would ask, Ms. Burkholder, is there anything you wish to add?
No, I'm, I think it would be a really nice thing for our family to be able to sit there and enjoy the the evenings, and for me to be able to sit there and do my work and watch the kids play outside with the neighbor kids. Just, I think it will add a lot of curb appeal to the house and add value to the house and be a nice addition, not just for us, but for others to see and look at as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the board wish to make a motion?
First of all, Laura, can you stop sharing for a minute so I can see my, I can see my application?
There's nothing being shared on my screen right now.
Oh, let me, oh, I got it. Okay. My, my bad. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a, I'm going to move that we approve the variance, and in actuality, I believe we have two variances before us. I'll deal with them both at the same point. I don't find, I believe the proposal for the side side yard setback is six inches. Is that right, Laura? As I read this?
Yes, yep, six inches.
Six inches. So obviously, that's to me in the grand scheme of things is de minimis. The footprint of what was, was being asked now and what was actually approved by this board on my motion back in 2019 is essentially the same. I think the open plan, which has been presented to us, looks very nice, it's very tasteful. I don't think it's going to affect the nature of the neighborhood. I said back in 2019, and I would reiterate the fact that I'm not quite sure that I totally understand how it has arrived at that, the, and I know there's a process that's gone through, but I think if you look at this neighborhood, and I believe this is noted, Ms. Robertson noted back in the minutes that we have before us from the prior meeting, that there were a number of, there were a number of properties in that area, some of which didn't need to meet the criteria previously that Ms. Burkholder has to meet with her current project, whether they were grandfathered. And I think in actuality, if you look at this property, it's consistent. What she's seeking to do is consistent with the other houses on the street. I don't see any environmental impact whatsoever. I don't know how she achieves, given the equation that's used, pretty much no matter what she does in the front of the house, anything that intrudes on that front yard setback because of the equation that's utilized for these properties. So I don't know how she can achieve the same goal of getting a front porch or that small addition on the front of her house without requiring a variance. Again, I've already stated, I don't feel the side yard variance. It's de minimis to me. And while the front yard setback is, appears to be, at least on paper, substantial, I don't think it really is substantial compared to the other properties in the area. So for those reasons, I move that we grant the variance again.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I remember this case from the last time, and I am, I will second the motion.
We have a motion made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we can call the roll?
I hope I'm not out of order, but I'd just like to confirm before I vote here today. Could someone please? I'm pretty confident I do recall this case, and I'm pretty confident I recall how I voted before. If I could just get a confirmation of my vote last time?
I believe it passed seven to nothing.
Yes, you voted to approve the variance, Mr. Green.
That's my recollection. Thank you for confirming it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
I, I do remember I voted yes, but this time I'm going to vote yes again. And just to put on the record here, that most of those houses were built before the town zoning became effective. And I think this is going to add some character to the neighborhood.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Sometimes I speak softly. I absolutely do recall this. And the fact that I voted yes before, I don't think constrains me should I wish to vote different this evening. However, it's not the case. Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I will also vote yes. Your variance is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time to come out this evening. Good luck with your project.
Thank you so very much. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You too. Thank you. Any other business to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman, did I note that our April meeting date is not the third Wednesday because of, or did I misread that? I thought it was later because of the, do we have a
School breaks?
School break in there?
I would ask Ms. Robertson to confirm.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my computer is just so slow tonight, but the school break is actually April 5th and 9th. So our our April meeting is the third Wednesday. It's the 21st.
I knew there was a vacation in there, but I thought it looked like it was later. Okay.
February got shifted.
Yeah, I know it did.
And how much do we have on the calendar for next month?
We would, we will probably have five to six cases. We just got one today that we think we can probably squeeze in, so.
Okay.
And are we still meeting virtually?
I don't have the answer to that yet. Town Hall opened this Monday, but they haven't held any town board meetings in person yet. And actually, Linda and I have to decide that fairly quickly because it's a lengthy process for us to advertise the cases and post them in the mail. And so sometimes, like if the town board is like, okay, we're going to have a meeting, we've already posted that it's virtual just by the nature of it having to be so far in front of the next meeting. So right now, I, my expectation is that it probably will be, but I don't have that final detail for you yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business? I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we stand adjourned until next month. I want to thank everyone for their time this evening.
Thank you. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Bye-bye.
St. Patrick's Day to everybody.